With you. In the New Testament and the NGL, you call us to love you with all our heart, soul, mind, strength, and to love our neighbor as ourself. Using only you as our example, may we serve the city of Hilliard and each other with the respect, kindness, and compassion that we would like in return. Help our hearts to be soft, our ears open, and our minds focused on ways to come together to move Hilliard forward. Thank you for your help and your power in accomplishing these things. In quoting the Psalmist, make God be gracious to us and bless us, and make his face shine on us. Lord, not because we are deserving, but because of your mercy and grace, so that your ways may be known on earth and your salvation among the nations. In Jesus' name, amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Carrier?
I'm here.
Ms. Cottone?
Here.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Here.
Mr. Teeter?
Here.
Vice President Vermillion?
Here.
President Tarazi?
Here.
Council has copies of the April 24, 2023 special slash executive session and regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those minutes stand approved. We're going to commission board reports and Board of Zoning Appeals, Peggy Hale?
Nothing to report.
Destination Hilliard, Cynthia Vermillion?
They met this past week, and everything is going really well.
Environmental Sustainability Commission, Pete Marsh?
They will be looking at some resumes that came in for vacancies, hopefully with some recommendations coming in June.
Morpsy, City Manager Crandall?
No recommendation or no comments this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Planning and zoning commission, Peggy Hale?
We meet this week.
All right, thank you. No report for Public Arts Commission, other than obviously what we have on the agenda today. And we are going to be going out for additional call for artists soon. Recreation Parks Advisory Commission, any report? Les?
No.
Okay. Shade Tree Commission and Andy Teeter?
We had a meeting last Tuesday, and we also have an opening, and I believe are advertising for a new member.
Aging and place committee, Tina Cottone?
We were at the, at a health fair at the community center, at the senior center last Tuesday, I believe it was, and we had a lot of people come by. We had, we had handouts. And interestingly, the most popular handout was the one about, I forget what it was titled, but it's, you know, preparing, like having, getting wills and having things in place. And that was by far the most popular thing. Then the thing I'm really excited about is then tomorrow and Wednesday, we have focus groups. Tuesday evening, we have a focus group, and Wednesday morning, we have a focus group with seniors. This is a follow-up to the survey that we did in January. Really excited about this, so let you know how it goes. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. So are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we move into the public portion of the meeting.
Sir, you have one item for the consent agenda?
Right, and that's what we're about to get into here. There's one item on the consent agenda, which is the updated Bee Bubbly mural. Everybody should have an email that was on your, in front of you with this picture, this updated picture. Staff has no objections to this updated artwork. Would anyone like this item to be moved to the regular agenda for further discussion?
So moved.
Well, okay, motioned. You want to discuss it on the regular agenda?
Sure.
Okay. So is there a second? Is there a second?
Do we, do we need to discuss it? What are we talking about? It's super cute.
Is it?
I'll second if he wants to discuss it.
Okay, fine. So then we'll call?
Are you going to move it down to under council discussion, or what part of the agenda would you like to move to?
Well, I mean...
Fastest way we can get it off of it, if I have my choice.
Excuse me?
Fastest way we can get through it.
So let's move it to, what is the first thing? Under, right after, it was just before resolutions, how's that? We'll put it there. All right, we'll come back to that.
Are we voting to move it, or?
Oh, yeah, a roll call then?
Yeah. Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Oh. I don't believe it needs a vote to move. I think anybody...
We don't need to vote.
Can remove it? Yeah.
He motioned, so. Second, so.
I know, just catching up.
Yeah. Vice President Vermillion?
To wake up here. All right, so, so just for procedure purpose for the future, if a council member objects, then it goes, or that needs a motion and second?
It does not.
It does not.
Anybody can object.
Anybody objects, and it just goes automatically?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay, we know for future.
But Ms. Vermillion? Okay.
All right, so the record is clear now. This is the public portion of the meeting. Has anyone signed up for a public comment?
I have no one signed up, sir.
Okay. So there's not, we will now go on to the, there's no second readings, public hearing tonight, so we go on to first reading. We have one first reading tonight. Will the clerk please read 23-07 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Advanced Drainage System, Inc., authorizing the finance director to transfer funds, and authorizing the appropriation and expenditures of funds.
Is there a member who would like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. So is that staff report?
Good evening, members of council. This legislation authorizes the city to both appropriate and expend funds in association with the roadway that needs to be constructed as part of the Advanced Drainage Engineering and Technology Center. The total cost is 2.23 million dollars, of which we get reimbursed $600,000 from both the State Department of Development and ODOT. So this legislation is just first reading, but would allow us to support the Advanced Drainage Project.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
How many jobs?
That's in the memo. It's 322 existing employees, 170 new, and that's over 108 million in payroll, which equates to over $2.7 million a year in income tax.
So we get our money back in the first year?
Retained, that includes retained, but yes, just by keeping this company here, we get our money back.
Well, that was easy. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So ordinance 23-07 will be held for second reading at the next meeting of council on May 22, 2023. So now we will return to the Bee Bubbly mural on the agenda. Any comments or questions or discussion?
Well, I got a question.
Go ahead.
That's why I moved it off the agenda. So my understanding is Bee Bubbly came up with something. It was too close to their logo. It was a bee, so we moved it to butterflies and sunflowers, correct?
Who are you asking the question to?
I guess it'd be staff.
That's correct. The bees were too close to their logo, so we asked them to go back and, or council asked them to go back and adapt it. And what they came up with, staff has no objection to. We like the mural.
Okay. So they, do they pay for it, or do we pay for it, to the Arts Council?
It's theirs, they're, they're paying for it.
Okay. Go ahead. Make sure I understood the process.
All right. So then, and any other comments or questions, I guess, first thing? Seeing none? So then, do we do a roll call?
I would do a voice vote probably to approve it, or do you think it needs a roll call at this point, Phil?
Yeah, I think since it was polled, let's do a roll call.
Then we need a motion and a second roll call?
All right, so motion to approve this petition for the mural.
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, so roll call, please.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Will the clerk, that's exciting, actually. That's going to look really nice by the splash pad, so very super cute. Anyway, will the clerk please read 23-R-30 by title only?
Appointing members to the city's Recreation and Park Advisory Committee, R-PAC.
Is there a council member who would like to sponsor and adopt 23-R-30?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none, will the clerk please call, call the roll on 23-R-30?
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Okay. Will the clerk please read 23-R-31 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an amended professional services agreement with the Edge Group, Inc., for construction administration services for the athletic fields at the Recreation and Wellness Campus.
Is there a council member who would like to sponsor and adopt 23-R-31?
So moved.
Motioned and seconded, staff report on this one? Is there a staff report?
Yes, this, this resolution authorizes an amendment to the professional services agreement with the Edge Group for construction administration of the Hilliard Athletic Complex. Edge submitted a proposal for these additional services and, for $105,000 in funds, and funds for this necessary component of the project were appropriated previously in the city's 2023 capital budget. If there's any other questions, I can answer those this evening.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none on my left, no questions? No questions? Okay. So will the clerk please call the roll on 23-R-31?
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Will the clerk please read 23-R-32 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with professional pavement services for the 2023 Sidewalk Maintenance Program, CIP-T-160, and authorizing the expenditure of funds.
Is there a council member who would like to sponsor and adopt 23-R-32?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Go ahead with staff report?
Good evening, members of council. This resolution would allow the city manager to authorize this contract. On April 13, we received three bids for the 2023 Sidewalk Maintenance Program with professional pavement services submitting the lowest and the best bid for $457,185, which was within the 10% threshold for this project. This legislation also would provide funding for Prime AE to provide contract administration, inspecting, and testing services for this project. The memo and the maps in your packet provide a complete overview of the program and a funding breakdown, and I would be happy to answer any questions for you.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Councilmember Marsh?
One question on, due to the funds, we weren't able to do the whole Avery subdivision.
Correct.
How, how, how close were we, and will we be able to make that up next?
We got about 65% through the neighborhoods. We have about 35% to go. We, we were able to do 257 properties, and we have approximately 125 left. In addition to that, we would like to also connect the remaining portion of sidewalk that is missing from, on Dexter Avenue by the, by the gas station, so then it would connect and also have a walking path for those residents as well.
Councilmember Vermillion?
Thank you. Hi.
Hey.
I was wondering, the three bids that came back, of course, we couldn't help but notice the huge difference.
Correct.
What, what would account for such a huge difference?
Well, in my opinion, the two bidders who are frequent contractors in our, in our, in our city, I believe that they bid high because they already had enough work for the 2023 construction season, and if they got it, they would find a way to make it work because the professional pavement services bid was in line with what our engineer's estimate was and what we were hoping for.
That makes sense. And secondly, the residents, what has been their reactions? How have they responded to all of this?
I think more positive than not, from my standpoint, because I'm the one that receives all the phone calls and all the emails and all the messages, and I, I believe it's positive. They, they want it to get done, and majority of the people then opted into the city's program and wants the city to do it, and they're looking forward to the improvements in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the left? Go ahead.
The question I have is, how much would it take to do the whole neighborhood versus what our spend was now? You know?
To do the whole neighborhood?
You're 60% of my, so is it fair to say?
I would have, I would anticipate probably close to $800,000.
Total of 800?
Yes. We tracked it as we went along, so we could keep track of, since we knew what our funding was.
And that 800, did we get any of that back? We get a percentage back, right? Because some of those tiles are this, the residents versus us.
Correct.
But we have to, okay, I guess what I'm getting at...
We have to front the cost, and, and depending on whether they pay upfront, or they have it assessed over their property, is when we will see that, that money come back.
So you don't know exactly what we're financing versus what we might get back yet? Because that's...
I do not. It will not be built out until, after the first of the year, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Councilman Hale?
Thank you.
Turn on your microphone if you're going to give a thumbs up. Anyway, any other questions?
Ready?
Any other questions? No other questions? Yes?
Just a comment, I didn't, I know that you have seen Roberta Barkheimer here before, but I didn't get a chance to introduce her at the beginning. She's our transportation project engineer, so just as her...
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so with nothing, no further questions, then I, we just call the roll then on 23-R-32.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
All right. Will the clerk please read 23-R-33 by title only?
Authorizing the conditional use for indoor commercial recreation at 5303 Norwich Street, Suite 400, within the OHMD Old Hilliard Mixed Use Zoning District.
Is there a council member who would like to sponsor and adopt 23-R-33?
So, second.
Motioned and seconded, staff report?
Good evening, members of council. So this is the building at the western corner of Main Street and Norwich Street. It has four commercial tenants in it currently. One of the tenants, which is mostly retail business, would like to add a yoga studio. It's a different use, but this site will still meet the parking requirements per our code, one of the few sites in Old Hilliard that's able to meet the parking requirement because of the parking lot that they have and the size of the parcel. The only concern that we really had that came through the planning commission was, as this, from the building code standpoint, there are different requirements for this type of use, so we have to work with them on whether they have to add a bathroom or something like that on the interior. But from the use standpoint, we think it'll be fine, the conditional use provisions in the code, we think this meets. It's about a third of the tenant space. Do you have the floor plan? Do I have that?
She's actually got it indexed and in there where we can click and see it, and so...
Are you on?
Oh, good, there's a floor plan in there. Keep going, right there. So, and the up, the upper left there, the purple Hilliard Mercantile, that's the, oh, here we go, all right, thank you. And then this is the tenant space, so you can see most of the tenant space is retail. The yellow shaded portion would be the studio space. There's a limit on how many people can be in there at a time, but you see the two bathrooms there. Those bathrooms are shared by the four tenant spaces. So whatever they have to do to meet the, the code requirements, we work with them on, but it's from a use standpoint, we don't have any problems with this planning commission recommended approval for this as well. Do you have any questions about this proposal?
Any questions? Looking to my left. No questions? No question? There's no questions then, thank you very much. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
Okay. Resolution 23-R-33 has passed and will be effective at the earliest date allowable by law. Will the clerk please read 23-R-34 by title only?
Authorizing the conditional use for brew pubs and similar establishments at 4071 Grant Street within the OHMD Old Hilliard Mixed Use Zoning District.
All right. Is there a council member who would like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Motioned and seconded. Go ahead, staff report?
So this is a request for conditional use for a new winery and event centers. In particular, the conditional use is for the portion that will be the production area for the winery. It's approximately 1,850 square feet. The three properties are highlighted in blue, so it's the junction site, as well as two residences that are located on, and fronting onto Grant Street. This development has gone before the planning commission to get conceptual parking plan approval for the, the building, as well as an outdoor event center and an outdoor patio area. This is a conceptual rendering that was put forth to the commission last year. They recently came in and got final plan approval, Old Hilliard District Plan Approval, so this is the architecture that was approved with the elevations. And the production space is approximately 48 square feet of the total square footage of the building interior, which complies with the code. They also got site plan approval, and this will provide private parking that will be for employees, as well as providing public parking along Franklin Street. So in terms of the planning commission approval, they received approval for the Old Hilliard District Plan with conditions that will be addressed. The conditional use, the planning commission recommended approval of that, six zero, based on the fact that it, it meets the intent and purpose of the, the comprehensive plan of what the plan calls for in the Old Hilliard District area, and it's done in a manner that meets the specific criteria in the code. So with that, I can answer any questions?
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Can you go back to the slide that shows the parking, the public parking?
The, the parking that'll be for public purpose is the, the line that stretches from the, the yellow square back to where you see the, the word "the junction." So this entire row here. Also, as part of the proposal, they're looking to implement some additional parking adjacent to the arts center, and then relocate the, the current dumpster, which is in this location, over to the back of the arts center for efficiency and to provide more parking for the food truck area as well, that would be in the outdoor events area.
I'm just trying to imagine, in that corridor, I know it's that, I mean, it looks like an alley, but it's, I guess it's a street. So is that not going to be a throughway anymore there, or?
No, it will be. So this will be kind of an extension of the public parking lot here, so because of the narrowness of the right of way, they're going to mirror the, the public parking that's currently in place here, and basically extend the parking lot to the, the building, you know, the entrance to the junction.
Do, do they anticipate that that will be enough spaces?
We took that through the planning commission. They actually got joint parking approval for the junction with their parking up here, and they meet code requirements for all of the site.
I guess my, my other question would be too, like when the arts center is having an event, is that going to eat into their parking?
As with all the businesses in the district, there's an understanding that, you know, these would be available to the public. So given the larger, you know, public space that's there, you know, the intent is that people can park anywhere in that area and easily walk to the, the building.
We've been working with the Public Arts Commission, too, when they have significant events there, to try and help them kind of cordon off some of the, some of the spaces.
Thank you.
We can, we continue to look for other available sites for lot parking down there as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from my left? Question? Would the clerk please call the roll then on 23-R-34?
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Pass seven zero.
So that concludes the business portion of the agenda. For residents communication, I have a couple of ideas I'd like to talk about, but we'll do it in the items for council discussion. And so we're on to staff reports. Are there any staff reports?
No staff reports this evening.
None? And then city manager updates. Ms. Crandall, anything to report?
No updates.
No updates, okay. So we're now on to the items for council discussion. I think we'll start off with this statement that Cynthia and I were going to read about the, recognizing certain important events. So I'll start off regarding National Police. National Police Week is May 14 to May 20, 2023, and is a time to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities. May 15, 2023 is designated a Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. We would like to thank and recognize the men and women of the Hilliard Police Department for their bravery, commitment, and service to our community. So thank you.
And secondly, we'd like to take notice of Economic Development Week. Like, who knew there was an Economic Development Week? But there is. May 8 through 12. This week, we also celebrate and recognize Economic Development Week. Economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurs in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. We would like to recognize and thank David Meadows, I don't think he's here, and the entire Economic Development staff for their hard work and dedication to making the city of Hilliard a premier destination for businesses and a better place to live for our residents.
And then there's Teacher Appreciation Week. May 8 through the 12th is also Teacher Appreciation Week. We would also like to thank the teachers and education professionals in our community who spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling students and families, and providing their time and talents to the community by educating our youth. Thank you for all that you do because of our youth is our future. So thank you to the teachers and working at our Hilliard School, and administrators, too. Obviously, they've, they've never, enormous amount of time. Go ahead.
And finally, we have Mental Health Awareness Month, which is the month of May. Millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental health condition. Millions of Americans face the reality of living with a mental health condition. Each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and resident has a responsibility to promote mental health wellness and support prevention. City Council would like to recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I had one item I emailed everybody about, and I'm, I know, I guess what I'm asking today is to see if there's interest in council to assign it to a committee of the whole for further discussion. And basically, my thought process is, the last time around, we looked at the charter, we looked at a million different edits to the charter. There was a lot of different things that were debated and discussed. There's an element in there that I think is worth revisiting, which is this issue that under the charter currently, the Law Director and the Finance Director are 100% under the discretion of the city manager. As I put in the email, Dublin has it, that city manager needs consent of council, as in Upper Arlington, both, I believe, memory serves. And under Dublin as well, there's, the Law Director is actually appointed by council. Other communities even have the Law Director elected by the general public, which I personally favor as an idea. So not to start a huge debate discussion today, it's just basically asking if council is willing to put this as a matter for committee of the whole for further discussion, or if there's just no interest at all, and then let's not waste everybody's time. So just seeing what people think.
I think there's probably various things in the charter that we could look at that maybe have been overlooked or that could be phrased better. So I don't have a problem with taking our time and looking through the entire charter.
Okay. So what I would suggest, if we're going to proceed in that manner, because I don't know, these are just, I mean, the charter's got a million things. By the way, I have heard complaints from a lot of people, and maybe Ms. Crandall has some criticisms, somebody else, whoever, maybe we just sort of collect all the various criticisms, or not criticisms, you know what I mean, like issues that need maybe a second look, whether they're from staff or whether they're from other council members. And then let's just maybe have one council, the whole meeting, where we just kind of go through all of them and see what, if anything, we want to readdress. Does that sound like a fair approach?
I guess my caution would that be is we do have a process where we have a charter commission, and we use people from our community, which is the process we went through not that long ago, four or five years ago. I do remember they specifically discussed this issue, as well as we discussed this issue as a council. And at the time, I advocated for more council control and for council to approve cabinet positions and was met with absolutely zero support from the other members of council. But I guess I'd be hesitant to go into a charter review process that doesn't include the community, as we've always done in the past. And again, I don't see, there's always things you want to improve in the charter, but I don't see a reason to go through a whole review outside of that process and to put something in front of the voters. I don't see the need for any of that time or expense right now.
Well, the charter review happens every 10 years, right? And even this year, as I recall, there was a proposal to revisit the TIFs issue in the charter. And I'm simply looking at this issue as well of, you know, these lines of authority as it relates to the Law Director. And if the council as a whole does not want to look into this for 10 more years, that's fine. I'm just asking the question. So I guess, any other thoughts? Go ahead.
You know, being here the longest and being through that process on this panel, you know, the Charter Commission also wanted to keep it strong there, and we basically moved to override it and go to the city manager, form of government. So we've been operating under this, and we've run into some snags, which have been, some have been very vocal and some have been very private, but there are some tweaks in there that we could probably look at. I don't think it hurts to refine it, as long as you do it openly and transparently, and in the end, the community's going to make the call on it anyway. So to me, I do think we need to think about it from a committee of the whole perspective, but then probably discuss how would we bring, or could we bring individuals into the process that could also provide insight. But I don't think it's just because the charter says it's every 10 years, we can't look at. I think communities all over the place are going through this, too. Grove City just did it again. They had several amendments to theirs to refine how they operate as well, and they did it in a non-charter amendment cycle based on their charter. So it ultimately boils down to the community, whether they're going to agree with the way we operate or not, that's where the power originates. So I'd be in favor of if you put a motion to put it to the committee of the whole to start taking a look at it.
Okay. Any other comments, suggestions? Are you looking at me like you want to say something? No? Okay. Do you want, no? So then, yes?
Hang on.
I'd only ask that we think through a little bit what that process will look like, if that's the will of council. Sorry. If it's the will of council to review the charter, I would just ask that we think through what the process of that looks like. As Andy mentioned, we have kind of a formalized process in place, but if we're going to look at it, I can't recall in my time that we've looked at the entire charter. We've looked at individual pieces as a council. So I just think we might want to think that through a little bit.
The way I was thinking about it is, we're just talking about today voting to have a committee of the whole discussion. We could do nothing after the committee of the whole discussion. We could take one piece or two pieces and send them off to the regular agenda, and if seven people want to put it to the voters, or however many, I don't remember actually, how many?
Five.
Five. If five council members wanted to vote to send it to the voters, that can happen at any time. That's part of the process, too. So if we, as, I don't think we're bound by charter to wait 10 years to fix something if we deem, if five council members deem that it should go to the voters to tweak and fix. So I think what my proposal is, we just set it for committee of the whole discussion, and if council members, if any council member has some things they'd like looked at, maybe let's send an email to the Law Director and have them sort of, you know, look at that suggestion or whatever, and let's have a conversation. That's kind of how I would envision to where we would proceed. Does that sound fair to you, or would you prefer something different happen?
No, that sounds better. The idea of council members making a suggestion, can up or down vote it. I didn't want to go line by line through it. Really, why not?
Well, I don't think we're at that stage. I don't think nobody's, I don't think, at least I'm not proposing line by line. I don't think, I mean, maybe you've got one or two things, I've got one or two, I mean, we either get a one or up or down vote on it, and we don't. We, you know, we move on. So I guess today, I guess the question is, motion to have a committee of the whole conversation at the next council meeting as it relates to proposed charter changes? Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. Any, then roll call?
President Tarazi?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cottone?
I'm going to vote no, and the reason that I'm going to vote no is because, as it was presented, it sounds to me like there's something specific that you don't like and that we're going to look at that. Doesn't feel to me like it's a good use of our time to go through and pick out personal agendas, which is what the whole thing feels like to me, so that's why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes.
Mr. Teeter? Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Okay. So pass five zero. So we can have a council of the whole discussion at the next council on that topic. I believe you had something, it sounds like, or did you want to address something as the next item?
I do, President Tarazi. I would like to read this statement of council support for our Hilliard City Manager and entire Hilliard staff, and then follow it with a motion that we vote on it as a council as to whether to support it. So in response to the divisive tenor of the past few council meetings, we, members of the city council, want to take a moment to confirm our strong support for our city manager and the entire Hilliard city staff. We confirm our dedication to work together to move Hilliard forward. Our city staff loves this community and is invested in Hilliard's future. Every day, they work for the betterment of our community. We appreciate them and all they do. This is a brief summary of what council and staff together have accomplished within the last year. We took the Hilliard Recreation and Wellness Campus from a conceptual plan to a well-attended celebratory groundbreaking. The partnership between Hilliard and Converged Technologies created Hilliard City Lab. This turns our city into a one-of-a-kind testbed for new technology, prototypes, startups, and the fiscal benefits that accompany these additions. The TruePoint development continues to move from concept to reality and will be Hilliard's first true mixed-use development. Four C Power, a company based in France that designs and manufactures smart battery systems, will bring its North American headquarters to Hilliard. Old Hilliard continues to expand with new restaurants and businesses, adding to the vibrancy of our downtown area. Hilliard's updated comprehensive community plan was approved by council, ensuring thoughtful and intentional growth and development. This plan involved significant community engagement. The 2023 Hilliard State of the City event was heavily attended and brought the community together. It was great to hear the positive comments from our residents. And of course, our Recreation and Parks Department continues to add new and engaging activities for our entire community. This is but a small glimpse into what we have accomplished together. The state of the city is strong. And with that, I'd make a motion that we vote on this to adopt it.
Second.
Okay.
I got a question.
One issue at a time. Okay, so there's a motion. Can we be clear on what exactly the motion is?
It's just so individual council members can show their support of this.
Okay. Go ahead, and then you seconded? Or you first, you motioned?
I seconded.
You motioned, and you're seconding. Okay. Just a point of clarification, is that even, like, it's a motion not to do something? It's a motion, is that even, I'm just asking procedurally. Does that make, is that proper?
Yeah, usually motions are for support of something that isn't binding in more ceremonial nature. For example, you do that a lot for, like, House bills that you may want to support or not. So this seems right, what a motion should be.
Is it a resolution?
Okay, so.
My understanding, this can't be a resolution. It's got to be a motion, right? I mean.
So it's just a motion that you support the statement?
I mean, that's what I think you're asking.
Absolutely.
Any, well, let me go around the room. First of all, any comments on this side? Comments? All right, any comments? Go ahead.
Okay, so who, so Andy, you're putting this forward as a statement from council, correct, as a whole?
Correct.
Okay. I just got this today at whatever time that Mr. Councilman Marsh sent it over to us. I hadn't seen any of this language or had any look at this. Did anyone else have a look at this language and it edited in any way?
Sure, several people saw it.
Okay, several council members?
Yeah.
Okay.
About the same timeframe you did, maybe before, but not that much time.
Okay, so this was just beginning, being circulated when?
Friday, but I don't think it did much over the weekend.
Okay. So I guess this is a point of clarification. Do the rules, are they applicable to this, or should this have gone to you as to form and content? I'm asking the Law Director, just for the record.
No, motions don't need my approval.
Okay. So, okay, that's the first thing I want to understand.
Okay.
So it didn't go to you for forming?
I have not seen it till I walked in here this evening.
Okay. I guess one of my, I guess, so Friday you started it, we got it today, and I guess my concern is, is number one, if we vote on this, there's a couple of questions around, one is going through my mind right now, it's the Sunshine Law, Opens Meetings Act. Because it sounds like it was circulated, and it was edited, and outside the public body. So I have a real concern about being effective as a council of a whole, as a body, because of that possible violation of that act. And we went through this with the electrical aggregation, we've been through it with some other items surrounding email chains, seeking money for budget items, you know, we've been through this several times. And the proper way to do this is through the rule of council, which says you bring it to the floor, you get it to the Law Department, have them review it, and you follow the charter. Now, this is a simple motion, so I don't know if the rules apply, and I guess that's one of the clarifications I need to understand. It doesn't sound like they do.
Yeah, the motion, a motion like this to support is generally not something that the Law Department has to review, because it's, you know, it's not overly, it's not binding in any nature. It's a statement of belief, and councils do that, I'm sorry, and councils do that all over, yeah, all over, like I said, for House rules and other issues that come up or things like this.
So does these types of documents, would you believe, or do you have an opinion, and if you don't now, I understand if you want to go look at it, are they applicable to the Open Meeting Act?
Oh, absolutely. Everything is.
It's on the table now, so individual council members can make motions to change it, to add things to it, to subtract things from it in an open meeting.
Right. And what I was getting at, and the questions that you answered earlier, is it sounds like it had been through a couple council members. First, I saw it, it was this afternoon. Did anyone else see it ahead of time?
Yeah.
Who saw it Friday? Let's just clarify. Let's get the record out there. Who was working on it over the weekend?
Does that make a difference to how you're going to vote?
Well, I don't believe that's even relevant, Vice President Vermillion. What I'm looking at is the Open Meetings Act and how it applies to something like this.
It was.
So the question on the floor is, did anyone else see it, and when did they see it? If you don't want to answer, I understand.
No, I'm just saying, it's my understanding that I can have a one-on-one with another council member, right? That's outside of the Sunshine Laws.
Correct. But when you, when you, when you do what appears to have happened here, and I'm not saying it has, I'm trying to get some clarity around it now, and my question to you is, did you have a look at this and provide any edits?
I did.
Okay. And Ms. Cottone, did you?
I wrote the initial document.
And when was that, was that Friday?
Yes.
Okay. And was there any discussion about having this type of document before just Friday? Because my understanding, there was some document being circulated or discussed almost after the press release when the Finance Director was terminated. So was there any discussions around something like this then?
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about when you're referencing.
Discussions around a statement of council in support of the city manager and staff.
Not that I know of, no. I don't.
Okay. Anyone else?
I know.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to highlight is my concern that it was done behind closed doors. It's very similar, and it feels very similar to the issue we highlighted with the electrical aggregation, stuff being circulated without everyone being involved. And when I mean everyone, it has to be in this format. It can't be behind closed doors.
And that's where we're at right now.
I don't know how you can sit and write a letter.
Well, we're very far from that, because this was drafted and edited before it got here by many numerous members of council.
Be presented to council as a whole so that we can discuss this as a body.
Okay.
And we can decide whether to support it or not as a body, or if you want to make edits to it now, you can.
So do you want to put it in the committee of the whole as the rules require, or do you want to want the edits now and vote it up and down tonight?
I just think individual council members want to take, want a chance to be able to support this or to publicly state their support for this.
Okay.
And that was, that was the motivation that was brought behind this. It wasn't to do anything in secret or anything hidden. Council was frustrated by the last couple meetings, and we felt a desire to support our administration and our staff.
I mean, it's not a complicated concept. It doesn't require pre-reading. It is simply, do I, Tina Cottone, support our city manager and the, and staff? Yes, I do. I wouldn't have to think, I wouldn't think that you would have to think about it that much. And the materials supporting it is just a list of things that we have done together as a council, as a city.
Oh, and I don't disagree with any of that. I guess, and that's where we're talking past each other a little bit, what I disagree with is, is the process in which it was drafted, because clearly it was drafted behind closed doors. And you, I don't know.
Unless you want to come and sit in my office with me while I'm writing it, I mean, nobody, I was by myself.
Understand, but then it was circulated.
And I didn't write with anybody, like, together.
Right. And then it was circulated, and there were edits made. What edits did you make to the document? Maybe that's a way to go at this.
What edits did I make?
Right, after you drafted it, what edits were made? Can you give us some examples?
Changes of wording, a lot of things were eliminated to make it more concise and, and, you know, not too wordy. The general concept is this, what it started out to be.
Okay. And by the way, just for the record, I have no problem supporting, our staff is awesome, okay? They do a lot of wonderful things. I'm a little concerned about where we are with the Finance Department and the divisive tenor where we landed on that issue, so I definitely have some concerns in relation to the city manager being involved in this document personally. I have no problem saying that out loud and publicly. But what I'm very concerned about is it's drafting behind in the, what sounds like many edits that were done amongst the members privately before it got to the floor. And I think, I do think that is a serious problem.
So are you?
President Tarazi?
Sorry, one person at a time. Go ahead.
Can we just vote on this? Can I call the question? Vote it up or down? We've.
Sure.
Everybody's made their points.
Well, one person has made points. I haven't gone around the room. I mean, if you're, one second, to make sure everybody has said what they would say. And one thing I, did you have a motion that you were asked? I almost heard like there was a motion, or are you editing this or not? Or you're just going to leave it as it?
No, I'm afraid it's not a legal vote, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to entertain any more on it.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
Just for transparency, I saw it on Sunday night, and I added some edits.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, any other comments?
Sounds like a lot of folks did.
I'm just curious, does, does nobody do any work before council meeting to come in and bring material that you want to discuss, because I don't, how else would you do it?
Okay.
Are you, who are you directing your question to?
Councilman Carrier.
Okay. Councilman Carrier, want to respond to this?
I think when you sit down, Ms. Cottone, Councilwoman Cottone, with an individual and you're talking about a piece of legislation, you're well within your recipe to do that. But when you start to circulate, and then you start to edit based on that feedback, I think the law requires this as a body to be more transparent amongst the public. Then what clearly has happened here is you've done that with certain individuals and left out other individuals, which I think adds a layer of, what are we doing? Okay? And should it be in public? And I think the answer to that is yes. In fact, I know it is. Because that's the way we should operate as a body. Okay? And then, when you go to the step of editing, you're actually deliberating, in my humble opinion, for what it's worth, and that is a cause for serious concern about what we're doing as a body. So...
Can we call the question?
Go ahead.
I believe we need to vote on it if it gets called.
I think, okay, do you have any other comments? And then, I'm, sorry.
I don't have any comment.
Go ahead.
It's just Mr. Marsh called the question, and I was going to confirm with Mr. Hartman.
I was going to interject, but yeah, somebody put a motion out, called a question. Need a second for that, I assume?
All right. You don't need a second. When you call the question, it goes to the vote of the motion that's on the floor.
Yeah.
Does that mean I can't comment at this point? We just vote, roll call it?
Yeah, that's how that...
Okay. That's fine. Roll call.
Mr. Teeter?
Yes.
Vice President Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Tarazi?
No.
Ms. Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Marsh?